Good evening. I'd like to call the September 10, 2018 meeting of the Board of Selectmen to Order. In accordance with open meeting law regulations, I'd like to announce that this meeting is being recorded and ask if there's anyone else in the audience also recording the meeting. Seeing none, could you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
The first item we have on the agenda is public comment. I don't believe, did we have anyone sign up, Sharon? No one has signed up. We'll move on to public hearings and presentations. We have a continuation of the hearing for the proposed plastic bag ban and adopted bylaw. Is there a motion to reopen the hearing?
A motion to reopen the hearing.
Second.
Any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The hearing is now open. So, just for some background, back in February, Selectman LaLiberty came to the Board and sought the support of the Board to look into the feasibility of a plastic bag ban, single-use plastic bag ban. He did research and we had our first public hearing back in March where we had residents and businesses who spoke about the plastic bag ban. We've held the plastic bag ban hearing open since then and have continued to accept feedback. We've, the town manager had the senior center director do an informal poll. We received some feedback from that and we've also done some other research on feedback from other communities that have adopted the plastic bag ban. I am going to turn it over to Selectman LaLiberty. I believe you have a brief presentation.
I don't have anything planned as far as going up and presenting like last time.
Did you want to speak to this?
I can speak to a couple of the things in the packet as well as the bylaw. The bylaw that I'm proposing tonight is slightly different from the one that I proposed back in March, I believe, or brought to the Board. A few things, typos for one, were changed and a few of the complaints brought forward by the chamber, I addressed. In particular, there was a complaint that the bylaw wasn't clear enough with regard to bags that are used for produce and meats. So, I specifically singled out bags for produce. It was never the intent to ban those or to have those be part of this to begin with, but they are specifically now mentioned in this bylaw along with bags for dry cleaning and newspapers. So, there's a specific exemption for those. The other thing that's changed is, I have a few Shaw's bags here. There are these flimsy bags that Shaw's and many retailers use. These ones would be banned with any of the bans across the state right now. With the advice of Mr. Carpenter, I looked at the other bans to try to make the one that I'm proposing as uniform as possible so that retailers aren't struggling with various bans in one town versus another. I did notice that in some towns with the bylaw, including the one that I proposed in March, a bag like this that's sold at Shaw's for 10 cents as a reusable bag would also not be allowed in Auburn. It's considered a reusable bag, but it is still made from the low-density polyethylene and only has a thickness of three mils. So, and is guaranteed for 125 uses. So, it is a reusable bag, but it wouldn't have been allowed under ours and it certainly wasn't under some other towns and sometimes it was allowed. So, in an attempt to make it easier for Shaw's and other retailers that might use a bag similar to this, I changed the definition in the bylaw that I'm proposing to allow bags of this kind as reusable ones so retailers will still be allowed to sell them and use them as reusable bags. Those are some of the changes that I've made based on what I heard at the last meeting to try to make things easier for shoppers and for, or for consumers and retailers, rather. The only other thing that I'd want to add is, I know we had talked about how it might be a concern with our brick-and-mortar stores in Auburn competing with online retailers. And it's true that we can't enforce this on online retailers. This had come up at the last meeting. But if you're buying something online that's coming to your door in a, in a box or probably a cardboard box, there is no plastic bag associated with it. The plastic wrapping inside the box, we can't touch. But if you buy something at the store that's also coming in a box and has plastic wrapping, that also won't, won't be affected. So, it is affecting online retailers the same in that sense. So, I just wanted to clear that up, I guess. Oh, and there is a map attached in these packets, so I'll explain that a little bit. At our last meeting, there was discussion of Harley-Davidson only being allowed to use certain bags that their headquarters provided them with. This map I found highlights the Harley-Davidson dealerships and stores in California. And California has a statewide ban on single-use plastic bags, similar to the one that I proposed. I did manage to call one of these dealers and ask them what they use and they said that Harley-Davidson does provide paper bags that meet the standard and they would also meet the standard that we have set here. So, there are paper bags available. For plastic bags, they did say that they had to go to an outside person and that they were not putting their company logo on the plastic bags. But the plastic, the paper bags still had the company logo on and they were still getting them from headquarters. So, that was just to answer the question that was raised at the last meeting. And other than that, I'll turn it over if any other Selectmen or residents have questions or comments.
Okay. So, that's all you have for right now?
That's all I have for right now.
Do the Board members have any questions or comments at this point? Mr. Holstrom?
Through the chair. I know that they have, we've got a couple of different towns here with their plastic bag bylaws and the articles written for their warrants. This one here, the cover sheet that we have right now is strictly a general bylaw amendment. Well, what bylaw are we amending? And I guess that's my question. What bylaw are we amending? This amendment, I thought that if something was going to come to the Board, it would be as a full bylaw and not a, an amendment to a bylaw. So, that's my question.
This is amendment, an amendment in the sense that it's in addition to the general bylaws. There wasn't a particular area that I saw that this would fit in. We don't have regulations or a schedule when I read through the general bylaws where I saw that this would perfectly fit, so I left that open. If there was a particular section, I know in some general, some bylaw amendments in the Commonwealth, they've been put under police regulation. That didn't seem to fit for Auburn. I didn't think it did since the police would not be enforcing this. So, I guess that's open as to where in the general bylaws this would be added.
I guess, through the chair, is it time that we can make notes on some of the bylaw and what the content is? Or should we wait to discuss that at a later point in the meeting? I have some suggestions about wording and type of thing in the bylaw itself, so I wanted to check to see if we want to have a hearing first and discuss it or we can talk about this now.
I would prefer to open it up to comments so the Board members can, can hear what the public has to say to make their decision. So, I'm now going to open it up to public comment. Anyone that wants to speak, come up to the microphone, please, once I recognize you. Give your name and address for the record and then you'll have up to three minutes to speak. Does anyone want to speak? Yes, sir. Go ahead. Please give your name and address for the record.
Tim LaBelle, 11 Inwood Road, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 2. Good evening to the Board and those attending the meeting. I'd like to ask the Board not to support this bylaw amendment to ban the sale and use of plastic bags. There are already many choices available for residents. Plastic bags, reusable cloth bags, biodegradable bags, paper bags. You can bring your own bags freely to the store already. The paper bags, as well as the plastic bags, are already recyclable, which many people already do. By voting to ban one of the choices that we already have, you're restricting our freedom of choice, which is important to me as a U.S. citizen, Massachusetts citizen, and as a resident here in Auburn. I'm not in favor of this government restriction on our right to choose. Not only does this bylaw amendment restrict the residents' freedom to choose, it also dictates to the businesses in Auburn how to run their businesses by restricting the plastic bags they use to specific categories. Furthermore, the bylaw amendment dictates to the businesses of Auburn the type of paper bags as well that they must use and sell in their establishment. I would encourage the Board to side with freedom rather than siding with the additional government restrictions on our freedom. We already have a very long list of laws, regulations, and restrictions on the books. I'd encourage the Board not to add to that. Please do not vote to restrict the freedom of choice of the residents of Auburn and dictate to the businesses of Auburn how to run their businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? That's okay. You're up. You can go. Oh, excuse me, one second, Doug. Just for the record, a representative of the Telegram has come in and he is making an audio recording of this meeting. Go ahead.
Good evening. Doug Nelson, Precinct 2, also Town Meeting Member. I very much agree with the earlier speaker. I'm not sure of the process, which has happened so far and how far it's going to go, whether it goes before, out for a vote of the general town, town meeting, or if it just happens within this body here. I just don't think it's right that a certain, you know, group of people should be able to determine and ban what they think is good for everyone else. What works for some people does not necessarily work for everyone. I think the town of Auburn has done an awesome job and they're doing a great job as far as being a green town and they're trying to do the right thing. But I don't think banning something and restricting people from that freedom of choice is the way to do it. I think we should educate and encourage people to do the right thing. I think most people want to do the right thing. Nobody likes bags blowing around. You know, one thing I've, I've done is actually saved them up. We have what we call a bag of bags and I'll bring them down to the farmer's market and give it to those people to hand out all their corn and beans and everything else and, and they happily accept those. Again, you know, it's about freedom and I really don't think, you know, people should be told how to, how to do this. I do, we also have the reusable bags. You know, those things do get dirty and have their own issues. Paper bags rip. You know, I don't really know the answers. When I was a little kid, my mother had one, which was like the net kind of thing and we'd put, put things in when we went to Spags, who didn't have bags, by the way. They used boxes. And, you know, so I think people should be allowed the, the choice and we should encourage them to not use plastic bags that are going to make a mess, but I don't think it should be enforced upon them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. And just, just for the record, a bylaw cannot be voted on directly by the Board of Selectmen. It does have to go to Town Meeting to adopt a new bylaw, so it has to go to Town Meeting if that's, if that's the way the Board chose. Town Meeting would have to approve it and it would also have to be approved by the Attorney General. Anyone else? Please, the woman in the striped shirt.
Lynn Gary, Five Fox Run Circle. I'm new to Auburn this year. I applaud Selectman LaLiberty for bringing this issue up. I find that most people in his age group are very environmentally aware and concerned and want to do the right thing, like previous speakers want to do the right thing. But I agree with his approach to doing the right thing. I think fear is a weapon, like when, you don't remember, but those of us with some gray hair remember, when smoking. We would all be sitting in this room, smoking our cigarettes, having our ashtrays, and it's hard to even imagine that now. And there was a lot of fear around that. We're not going to be, it's our freedom to smoke. It's our freedom to smoke wherever we want to smoke. Our business will go down the toilet and none of that happened. We are all better off for it. We will all be better off. The environment will be better off. Our children, grandchildren will be better off to start small like this and move ahead with other endeavors. So, I do applaud this effort.
Thank you. Next. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name's Lisa Rochford and I live at 10 Westland Ave. in Auburn. I support this ban. I am a volunteer member of the Solid Waste Advisory Committee. We meet typically once a month and we discuss a lot of things. This is one of them, so I really support this. We, I've gone to the recycling center and see how these plastic bags clog up the, the lines of where they have to separate the plastic from the cans and the cardboard and it, it's very disruptive to that whole procedure. I think that education is so important and that's what our Solid Waste Committee tries to do with Erica Lucier and Darlene Coyle and we have another volunteer member, Virginia Marshan and myself. And we go out and we teach, try to educate, like what, what can be recycled, what can't be. So, we really hope that the plastic bag ban will be approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you and thank you for your work on that committee.
Mark Imsey, 11 Dale Ave., Precinct 2. I'm not in favor of another regulation in terms of this. I think the education on it's good. I think unintended, unintended consequences are probably greater. Not everybody's going to go to reusable bags. They're going to use paper bags. Paper bags are far more expensive. They're, you know, they have all the disposal problems and everything that the plastic, everything that's done around here now is, goes to wheel abrader. It gets burned. It creates electricity. I mean, yes, there is some trash, but I also grew up in a time, you know, I've got, I've got the gray hairs, that we were getting rid of paper bags because it was using too much environmental, you know, using too much wood and paper, you know, to create it and stuff. So, we're, seem to be going backwards here. I think it's a huge unfair burden on our businesses. We're trying to keep them here in town. One of our biggest tax bases is retail, obviously. And if we keep on, I mean, we've been trying to push for getting the tax rates down even so that we can get more business to come back here, but this would be putting another burden onto the businesses because not only is the paper more expensive, it's also, you know, just to buy, it's more expensive to truck, more expensive to handle, takes up more space in the establishments. There's a lot of downside negatives to it. I'm not coming from retail. I mean, I retailed way back when I was a young kid. Not, you know, I'm an engineering background in construction and stuff, but done enough research to, you know, say that this is not the way to be going. And I think just the education and stuff and keeping, you know, if it causes problem in the recycling stream, the single-stream recycling is probably one of the best things we've ever done. And the recycling rates have gone up dramatically in that. I think our trash has gone down. You know, we keep the education going and we keep it doing that and not, not put the burdens on our businesses and stuff, so.
Thank you. Anyone else? No other additional public? Go ahead.
Good evening. Through the chair, I'm Robert Kearns, an elected member of the Sierra Club Massachusetts Chapter Executive Committee. In behalf of our over 100,000 members and supporters across the Commonwealth, including over 200 Auburn residents, I stand here in support of the plastic bag ban in hope that we can join the over 80 communities across the Commonwealth that has these types of bylaws. As we all know, plastic bags are convenient and they're cheap. However, the environmental expense of these plastic bags exceeds the cost retailers currently paying to provide them. There is no need for this. Simple alternatives such as reusable bags, biodegradable and single bags are available and used by many stores throughout Massachusetts. Single-use plastic bags should be limited because, number one, plastic bags harm wildlife. Bags are often mistaken as food by both domesticated and wild animals. Birds also use them as nesting materials with dangerous results. And untold numbers of animals die every year by ingesting plastic bags. These animals suffer a painful death. The plastic bag wraps around their intestines or choke them to death. Plastic bags are a major litter problem, as we all know. They're so aerodynamic that even when we properly dispose of them, they blow away. I used to work at the Town of Braintree Transfer Station and I, we can recall seeing the trash bags fly out of the trash and recycling trucks as they leave the facility or go into the facility. The city of Los Angeles found that plastic bags account for 25% of litter in the storm drains. Although Auburn is far away from the ocean, all storm drains lead directly into the local waterways that lead directly into our ocean, so it'll eventually reach there. And plastic bags make up the third-largest type of litter from land-based sources on U.S. coasts. Additionally, plastic bags do not biodegrade, as some people think, but they do fragment into little pieces through mechanical action by waves in rivers as well as through the presence of light. And this process of degrading takes over 200 years to complete. And when an animal's killed by a plastic bag, the bags may go on to kill again because once the plastic finally breaks down into these tiny little particles, they do not dissolve into benign substances. They just fracture into tiny, smaller bits called microplastics. These small plastic particles present the greatest long-term danger and displace food supplies in the world's oceans. As they have nearly an identical density as seawater, removal is not possible. Once microplastics enter our oceans, they will stay there virtually forever. Although this is not an issue of recycling, bags are rarely recycled to their low value and only 5.2% of our plastic bags are recycled. And to note, they can't be recycled in single stream. Additionally, as previous speakers have mentioned, they, bags clog the sorting, recycling sorting facilities and cause major maintenance costs, which are passed on to cities and towns who have to pay higher recycling costs. And I don't know if you guys are familiar with the, the problem with China's regulations on the recycling. The cost of recycling is just going to keep going up because of contaminants like plastic bags in our recycling stream, which is going to come back and you have to, eventually it may have to raise rates on trash and recycling. So, additionally, I know some speakers said that the plastic bags aren't made from trees, however, they are made from fossil fuels, frac gas, oil, which cause climate change as well as air pollution. So, there are as much larger impact from that than from the paper. So, in conclusion, tackling these issues will require the accumulation of many small actions to bring about a large change. Banning single-use plastics bags is an important and easily implanted step towards a meaningful change. If I may, through the chair, I have a couple pictures and some written testimony that I can submit to the record.
Sharon, yes, thank you.
You guys can check out the pictures. I have a picture of the recycling and then some of the animals. Thank you.
Are there any additional public comments?
Can you go twice?
I generally don't allow that. I'll give you one minute, Mr. Nelson.
It'll take less than that.
One thing I wanted to add is, we should be very careful if we open the door to bans on bags because there will be bans on other things short of follow. You just have to be very, very careful. You know, who knows what's going to be next? There'll be bags, it'll be bottles, straws, certain types of tires. You know, who knows what's going to, you know, happen? And, you know, we really need to think of the, the kids in the future and their future freedoms and their freedom of choice and their freedom to do, you know, as they choose without having to have these bans or have laws determine how they live their lives. You know, I think most kids nowadays are very smart and they're going to choose the right way and they're going to be able to decide this for themselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Is there anyone else? Okay, I'll give you one minute. I know your passion. I know people are passionate about this issue.
He's right. This is just the beginning. I hope there are more regulations. I hope there are more efforts. It's not going to stop here, nor should it stop here. It's the future of our planet, our children. And if this is one way, like recycling, you know, we, we are recycling. We are supposed to recycle. It's been proclaimed to be a priority and this is a priority. We do it, we'll do it one step at a time. It's not taking away anybody's freedom. When people talk about freedom, it just instills fear and fear is not a good way to get anything done. Keeping it positive and thank you.
Thank you. Any additional public comments? I'll now open it up to Board comments or questions.
Take a look at that.
Anyone want to speak?
I'll start.
I'm still Burke.
This has been a very, very difficult topic. I can certainly see both sides of things. I'm, I'm tending to lean toward the fact that, you know, we are constantly now being told by Boards, by governments, things that we need to, that we have to do. There are right ways of doing things. Our kids of today are very educated. They're very smart. They, they know things like get in a car and wear a seatbelt. A lot of us are, you know, old school, never wore a seatbelt, don't like to wear a seatbelt. We know that it's safer. We know statistics say that, you know, we're more apt to, you know, get injured if we don't wear a seatbelt, but we don't want to be told that we have to wear a seatbelt. I'm, I'm feeling that, you know, there's so many positives about a bag ban that, you know, good for the environment, you know, it's the, the bags aren't flying out of the trucks. If we didn't have the bags, they wouldn't be flying out of the trucks and going into trees and that type of thing. But what I'm hearing is that, you know, and we've started to, to really have a lot of education over the last few years on what to do with recycling and how to handle recycling. And I've learned a lot just being on the Board the last two and a half years about recycling. And I've respected that and I've started to, to make a lot of changes. You know, I go home and I re-plastic cup if I buy a Diet Coke at McDonald's. I now, I didn't realize, I go rinse out the cup before I put it in the pile to recycle. But I, I'm, I'm just leaning toward the fact that, you know, I'm, I'm sick and tired of the government telling me what to do. And, and I admire Mr. LaLiberty for, you know, for putting this forward and, and saying, like, I care about my environment. And it doesn't mean that I don't care about my environment if I don't go for this bag ban. It, it doesn't mean that I'm probably gonna, you know, probably go buy reusable bags more than using the regular bags. I've learned a lot from that. I think we can all learn a lot from that. I also think that there's going to be legislature coming down that is going to go against what I'm saying right now and they're going to tell us that the state of Massachusetts is going to eventually put a statewide bag ban in. And when that is, I have to adhere to that. But, but right now, I kind of feel like we're going in the right direction. We're educating people. Our businesses are, you know, hearing from Shaw's, they're, they're passionate about starting to make the change. They're, you know, they, they make bins available to bring those recyclable bags back and, and they, they get rid of those recyclable bags or the, the bags that would be in the bag ban. And just the feedback that I've been getting about the freedom of choice is, is just unfortunately taking the edge from me over, you know, because I, I don't think the freedom of choice is going to take away the fact that we're being educated and we're still going to have some, people that are doing a better job of recycling. But right now, for, for my purposes, if, if I had to vote right now before any Board, other Board member speaks, I would, I would vote against the bag ban right now.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. Mr. Holstrom and then Mr. LaLiberty.
I agree with, oh, through the chair, I would agree with Lionel in part. My feelings are that this town has gone a long way with My feelings are that this town has gone a long way with Solid Waste Advisory Board, with our Department of Health. There's a lot of education going on, we're receiving grants to help them with their education, and I believe it all comes down to the individual, that whether they want to use the bags, whether they want to take care of the environment, they want to clean things up, they want to make it all right for all of us. There's always going to be that certain few that are just not going to go with it, but I think all in all with the education the town has put forward, and I think that the town can go forward with a lot more education. It seems like there's more people interested in their environment. If we can help them out anymore, I would, but I think this is too restrictive, I think it'd be costly for businesses, and I don't think it's quite the way to go. I think that most people, if they paid attention to what they were doing, the plastic bags would kind of go away on their own because they, people would handle them properly. And right now, we need to stress that through education, and I think that's possibly the way to go. So right now, my feeling is that I would hold on this. The other case is, there's only 22% of the towns and cities in this state that have gone with a plastic bag ban. I know that there's legislation being proposed, how far it's gotten, where it is, and when it's going to be voted on by the state, who knows? And if we put something in place right now and we require the businesses to do regulations, restrictions, the state may come forward and say, "No, we want it done this way." Well, now it's costly for the businesses to go back and re-machine all the work that they've done. They've got to buy maybe new plastic bags, they've got to come under another specification for the materials. We don't know. But 22% of the towns and cities in Massachusetts does not give me a positive feeling on where the state's going to go when they come forward. Each one has had their own input, and they've made their own regulations. When the state comes through, it may be altogether new, and they may have to go back and redesign the wheel. So I would be very, very cautious in going forward with this.
If I just may, just an update on where we are at the state level, where he mentioned it. So the legislature did not take action in this formal session. It was included in the environmental bond bill, and it was never included in the final bill. It did come out of the joint committee with full support, but it was not voted on, so what would happen for it to, you know, the next step would be, it would need to, a bill would need to be filed next January, which is the start of the formal session, and be handled somewhere in the, you know, be sent to committee and be handled sometime in the next two years, which is the time for bills to be passed. So it didn't, the legislature did not take action this last session.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Mr. LaLiberty.
Through the chair. So there are a couple things that I want to address. Firstly, that's true when Mr. Holstrom said that only 22% of communities in Massachusetts now have some type of regulation on single-use plastic bags. That's 81 communities in Massachusetts, including the capital and the third-largest city of Springfield. With Worcester, I wouldn't guess is likely to follow, though I don't know what they're planning. But the last time that we met and discussed this in March, we were at 61. So in that six-month period, we've added 21 towns, or 20 towns, rather, with, I think, Situate, I believe, is voting on it soon, it's proposed, but, so they may be the 21st since we last talked about it. It's clearly to me that this is the direction the state, the Commonwealth is heading, and the country. We have several countries that now have implemented it. Mr. Burgham has mentioned before on his trip to Ireland that they don't use them at all. The European Union has started to push regulations on plastic bags, single-use plastic bags, and single-use plastics in general are a danger to the environment. So it's definitely clear to me that that's the direction that the state and the country are moving in, and I think more and more communities will do it. As a detriment to business, if we pass this and the state changes it, I made it, and I mentioned this before, I took the chamber's advice at our last meeting and tried to make this bylaw as lenient as possible, including even the fees. It's abnormally lower fees, as I presented before in March. Most bans have a $50 fee for a first offense or a first offense after a warning. I've tried to make it as lenient and as easy to understand to retailers as possible. Another thing that I've done is, and I'll bring this bag back that's used at Shaw's, I believe the ban, and you all have it in your packets, the statewide ban, granted this one wasn't passed in this session, but if something similar to this were to be passed, this kind of plastic bag wouldn't, wouldn't be available to them. However, it is under this ban. So something that would happen, yes, it would affect retailers because more things would be out for them as options. So that's true. This ban, however, would get them moving in that direction, and honestly, I think it would help them out if the state did it further down the line. And that's because a major part of this is educating residents. I was talking to someone earlier today, and as most of you know, I spend most of my time in Amherst during the school year as a student at UMass Amherst. And Amherst has had the ban the entire time that I've been there. I think they passed it my freshman year. So I live off-campus. When I go shopping, I'm always using a reusable bag, and when I first went to Amherst, I would always forget, I would always get the paper bags. But now that I've been going, I use the reusable ones. So if the state were to do it further down the line, I think Auburn would have the advantage. Most of their residents would already be used to doing it. Their, our Board of Health would already have it in place, and there would be very little extra work to go with regard to following it. So I honestly think that if, it would be better for Auburn to pass this now and beat the state ahead of it. Another thing that keeps getting talked about at this meeting that I really don't think was mentioned too much at the last is the freedom of choice amongst consumers, and that's an issue, that's something that I've raised before in other debates. But what I think makes this different is with the, going with the seatbelt metaphor. If you choose not to wear a seatbelt, then you're really affecting your own body and saying, making a choice for yourself, choosing not to be safe. What makes this a little bit different is the damage that the plastic bags do to the environment affects everyone and the, really, our common environmental standards. So it's less like a seatbelt and more like, I would think of it as DDT or lead paint, things that the government has stepped in. And sure, you can choose to paint your house with lead paint when you knew it was, it wasn't right, and I have removed lead paint. That's my summer job is painting, and it's a hassle to remove, and we, the government has now taken that choice away from people because of the damage it was doing to people and to the environment. So that's, that's a better metaphor in my mind, is it's something that's not just affecting the individual that's choosing, but it's affecting the people around them. So that's where I would, I would compare it to. The educational aspect, I think that education has helped. I'm, I'm sure it has, I'm sure we have less people that are throwing the plastic bags in recycling bins. But our Solid Waste Committee that deals with education told us, they voted unanimously that, to tell us that we should support this motion. And we have a member here today that came to tell us that themselves. So I think while education is an important piece, the people that are on the ground doing it are telling us this is also a great step forward. In fact, they told us that unanimously, that this is something that we should pursue to cut down on solid waste. Believe that's, that's it that I have to respond to right now.
Does anyone else want to speak?
I'll just, I'll just reply to that, and I am glad that Ms. LaLiberty brought up that, you know, in our conversations, I did go to Ireland last year and was surprised when I went to checkout that there were no bags. So thankfully, there were three of us in the store, and we all threw goods in our arms and made our way out to the car. And I think for myself personally, I don't feel strongly enough one way or another that, that I'm going to be that affected personally, whether there's a bag ban or whether there's not a bag ban. But what I am hearing from people, and it's not just the people that got up today and talked about the freedom of choice, I've heard it from other constituents, that basically they, they just, you know, I don't feel that they've been properly educated. If I, if I thought that, you know, Auburn for the last 20 years has been saying, "You have to do this, you know, this is the best way to do this, this is the best way to recycle, you know, this is what's going on with the environment, we need to make a change." I think globally, over the last 10 years, we've seen where this, these plastic bags and trash in general, not just plastic bags, but trash in general, you know, is floating out in the ocean and getting into our waterways. And I think that, you know, Auburn over, like I say, the last, with the Solid Waste Committee and doing an outstanding job, and that last chart that they brought to us, I think it was our last meeting or the one before, really, you know, showed, again, showed me a lot of things, and I'm now more aware of what I need to do to be responsible. But I just totally appreciate the fact that, you know what, let me be responsible, let our kids start to be responsible. Don't dictate what they have to do. Let us, you know, try to be responsible first. If, you know, if lead paint is proven to be bad, and it was, and people were still using it despite what they're trying to tell people, then, okay, they banned it and they felt that it was right at the time. And maybe someday, again, after all kinds of education or whatever, we're seeing that people are just being completely ignorant, and, but what we're doing is we're basically telling our kids once again, telling everybody, "You have to do this, okay? Or we're gonna, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna fine you, we're gonna fine the people." Indirectly, they're fining the consumer, because if, if the price of things go up for the retailers, the price of things are going to go up for the consumer. So again, I'm, I'm not so much against, you know, cleaning, you know, being more responsible. I guess it's the fact that I'm being told what to do. Constantly in my life, I'm being told what to do. And, you know, give me a chance to be responsible first. I think it's great that, that even the towns that have already passed it, you know, did they really give their constituents a chance to do things right and, and, you know, get the word out? I don't see a lot of signs around the town that say, you know, "We have a plastic ban, a plastic bag problem." I don't see, you know, any signs around town, you know, or in McDonald's that says, you know, "Make sure you wash out this cup." But I learned that, and I do it now, okay? Give me a chance to be responsible. You know, let us stop basically creating the roadmap for our kids and let them actually grow up to make choices for themselves and do the right thing, and educate them, but we need to stop putting government restrictions on things. And I, and that's, because I got to tell you, like, two weeks ago, I was pretty much for this bag ban, and then I started hearing from folks that were like, you know, "This is just like, how many more things are you going to tell us to do?" You know, the bottle bill, the deposits on cans, the, you know, all of this stuff. And it's like, we just keep getting told, "You've got to do this, you've got to do that," you know? And, you know, getting back to the seatbelt law, no, I don't have a choice anymore as to whether to wear a seatbelt or not because I can get a fine for it, you know? So yeah, I do have a choice, but, but I'm going to get fined for it, you know? I, I just feel like at 55 years old, I should be able to get in my car, and if I don't want to put a seatbelt on, I shouldn't have to fear, you know, getting a fine for it. And obviously, I think, you know, that's a, you know, a flexible thing and at the discretion of police and everything else, it, I guess it's a law, it's a law. But it's like, you know, stop telling me what I have to do. And, and this is, the, that's really the only reason that I'm kind of against it now. I'm certainly not against, you know, protecting the environment for my kids. I'm certainly not against trying to do the right thing. I'm just solely against being told what I have to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burgham. So I do want to thank everyone here tonight who submitted their comments. We opened the hearing in March, we had many, many people send comments via email. We appreciate those people who call Town Hall, as well as anyone who may have approached any selectmen individually to share their thoughts on this. It certainly is a hot, hot topic. Mr. LaLiberty, thank you for your work on this. What I've learned in my years on the board is an issue like this, the residents want to have their voice heard. I know that some issues have gone to town meeting, and we heard a lot of backlash after that, that residents really would have wanted to have their voice heard. So I believe the request is for the Board of Selectmen to sponsor a warrant article that it goes to town meeting. I would fully support putting this on the ballot in May and let the residents. My, my personal feeling, which I haven't shared because I wanted to have everyone's input, my personal feeling is, I lean, yes, I lean towards the plastic bag ban. We've had a lot of input, but, but I don't sit up here just to speak for myself. I sit up here, I was elected to be the voice of everyone, and there's been no clear mandate on this. We've heard, you know, we know, we all know people don't like to come up before the Board of Selectmen and have their, their voices heard, so they'll call us, or they'll stop us in the grocery store or CVS or whatever. So there isn't a clear mandate on this. A lot of work has gone into this. I've said over and over again since, you know, before Julie was our town manager, we have a significant littering and illegal dumping problem in the town that I've, you know, banged my head against the wall, you know, trying to deal with that. We have a proposed bylaw coming in soon, I hope, about those donation trash bins. But I, I believe the education has, has made significant gains in the recycling. We need to continue to do that. I mean, I was at the health fair and learned things from our health director myself. I didn't know that the big plastic wraps that you get around your plastic water bottles can be brought down to Shaw's as well. I thought it was just, so it's ongoing education. I think that we need to have a vote on this, but I think it needs to go further than town meeting. I really believe that, that it needs to be a ballot question in May. I think, Mr. Burgham, I mean, I'm sorry, Ms. LaLiberty had to stand up first, and then Mr. Holstrom.
Through the chair, I did have a few responses to things that have been said. So we have talked about education, and as I mentioned, we did get the Solid Waste Committee, which is dealing with education, to unanimously vote in favor of this bylaw. But also, even if everyone in town followed and was completely educated on this issue and knew that they shouldn't throw the bags out into the street or into the recycling bins, we're still going to see the issue of these plastic bags going on the trucks and then blowing away, as Mr. Kearns noted with a syrup of, that those plastic bags do, they are easily blown away from any kind of receptacle. Even at Wheeler Burton, where we, it's, we burn everything. It's not a landfill where things are sitting there. These plastic bags have blown away and have gotten caught in fencing and in yards and trees around the facility. So even if education were to go through and everyone knew what they were doing, it just wouldn't solve the problem. And it just, it's still a detrimental effect of the environment, really, for everyone, not just whoever's choosing to buy a plastic bag, rather than... not just whoever's choosing to buy a plastic bag rather than a reusable bag. The other thing I wanted to address is the price difference. I haven't personally noticed a price difference shopping in Amherst versus shopping around here, or shopping in Shrewsbury and shopping around in Auburn, Worcester. I have talked to several retailers in Amherst who have said that it wasn't significant. I talked to one retailer in Auburn that I noted in our last discussion, and that was in the packets that I provided, a convenience store over in Hadwin Plaza. Not Hadwin, I'm sorry, I'm confusing them.
Heritage.
Heritage, thank you. Who said that, I think it was a $3 difference between a pack of 500 plastic bags versus 500 paper bags. So, to him, he said it wasn't about the price difference at all, it was just understanding the bylaw and what would be, what the difference would be. He said he would, gets about one box of each a month, so it would just be an extra $3 to him a month. So, I really can't see the price difference being that significant or having that much of an impact on retailers. And as I said, I've taken the chamber's advice and changed things to make it as easy for them as possible, to have as little an impact on retailers as possible.
Mr. Carpenter. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Holstrom, you were next.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. I guess my question to you is, you were talking about presenting this to the voters. I guess the step we have to do first, we would have to go through the town meeting to vote the bylaw before it goes to the voters? How would that work? Can we get a little bit of clarification on that?
Through the chair, there are two different ways that you could send it to the voters in May, and then based on the results of the vote, the town meeting would then have to vote to create the bylaw that prohibited the bags, or banned them, or regulated them, whatever that vote was, would be done after the general election in May.
Okay, so that means that it would be in the fall of 2019 to vote this bylaw, if it was voted through?
Technically, I think you could probably put a placeholder on the May town meeting warrant, knowing, let me think, no, you can't, the May town meeting comes first. Yeah, it would have to be the fall.
Okay. All right. Well, I'm not adverse to that. You've heard what I've had to say tonight, we're not gonna repeat it, but I am not adverse to sending anything to the voters or to the town meeting. Get their input, find out exactly what's going on. There has been a lot of work done on this, and the efforts are commendable. And I thank you. However, we all have our own ways of looking at it and our own opinions, but I would never take away the ability to send it to the voters and send it to town meeting to let them decide as a body, and instead of having a limited number of people decide on it ourselves. So, I would be supporting moving along to a ballot question and then along to the town meeting if the ballot question actually passes.
Mr. Carpenter.
I too wanted to hear from everybody. I was hoping that the chamber would be here to give us more information, and I don't see anybody from the chamber tonight. I know they were here in March, and they expressed their concern for it. I would also support sending this to the voters, and not because of the fact that the government's going to tell us what to do, because I don't walk around saying, "I'm the government. I'm your neighbor, and I live in your town. Our state representative lives in your town. Our state senator lives in a neighboring community, and our United States congressman lives in the city of Worcester." So, when we talk about the government as this boogeyman, first of all, it's your neighbors. It's not some arbitrary body meeting in secret, as it does in some governments. And I guess the, this thought that, you know, government is bad, or that the people who serve our government is bad, really doesn't sit well with me. And I think we've gotten accustomed to people in and out of public office being very derogatory about those in government and those who serve in government and those who agree with them, and sometimes those who don't agree with them. So, I would just ask everybody to remember that government is us. We actually do have a direct ballot, and we do vote for these people. They're not just some person that we've never met or never seen. They don't live here, they live in, you know, New Zealand, and they're making decisions for us here in Massachusetts, because they actually do make decisions in their neighboring and their communities. And they ask us for their vote, and we should respect them, and we should respect those who serve our government. So, I too would just say, and I said this to Mr. Lil Liberty when we met, that I was on the fence, I wasn't sure what was going on, but just as additional information, this morning on my Twitter feed, I got something from Boston.com saying, "There's an organization that's actually going to put a boom out into the middle of the Pacific and try and collect some of the trash and other things." And so, it isn't beyond our ability to remove plastics from the environment, but I didn't hear anybody mention that today, and it was a pretty popular article, that a private organization raised millions of dollars and is going to do this. So, I think we shouldn't be alarmist about things, but we should be responsible. So, I would support a motion to send this to the voters. I would also support a motion to send this to town meeting, because the five of us aren't making the decision. Town meeting, which is elected, just like we are, and that's 120 people, and the residents can certainly call them on the phone and express their plus or minuses. So, the five of us aren't making decisions. The legislative body of the town will, if we send it to them. Or we can send it to the ballot box, and we can have residents say it, so express their opinion one way or the other. So, I can go either way. I don't feel that I'm making a decision for anybody. I think all I'm doing is not stopping something in more debate, which is always a good thing.
Mr. Bertham.
Just to say that if it did go to all of the voters of the town, I would definitely support that going to a vote, you know? And that's kind of what we're up here for, is to be, you know, an extension of our voters. I would want every voter in town to have the opportunity to, you know, to cast their ballot. You know, I would love to see more people get passionate about this, whether it's for or against. I'd like to get, I'd love to see more people register the vote, and I'd love to see more than 10% of our voters, registered voters, come out and vote. And I would be in favor of definitely putting it on a ballot for all of the voters. I would not be in favor of putting it to a group of voters. And I think that if it were to go on next November's ballot, that would give a lot of time to get information out there and signs, you know, for and against, and give people plenty of time to get out there and register the vote, and people plenty of time to get out there and vote.
I just want to, just so that I could, the question would have to go on the May ballot. A local question can only go on the local ballot, cannot put a local question on a November ballot. So, it would, the proposal would be to have it go on the May ballot?
Of 2019?
2000, yes.
Okay, that would be fine.
It wouldn't make this November's ballots, anyway. You know, questions have already been settled for the November ballot, but you can only have a local issue on a local, you know, a local election.
I misunderstood. I thought you had said that it couldn't go on the May, it would have to go on next November. So, but next May is also ample time to do what, you know, get registered and go put your vote in.
No, it would, it could go on the May's ballot, and then it would go to town meeting, which it would miss the May town meeting, so it would go to the fall town meeting. Fall town meeting would have to vote to adopt the bylaw if residents approved a single-use plastic bag ban.
But it'll be on May's ballot?
Potentially, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Lil Liberty had his.
I just wanted to add that I agreed with everything that Mr. Carpenter said. I certainly wouldn't be opposed to sending it to the May town ballot and having everyone vote on it there. Actually, I did read the article. I think it's a Norwegian company that released that machine that's going to collect the trash and try to clean up. It's actually a gyre that collects all the plastic in the ocean. They don't know how well it'll do in a storm yet, though, is one thing that I saw. But anyway, I guess I certainly wouldn't be opposed to sending it to the ballot in May. I do think that residents have had their opportunity to come in and talk to us about it. We were elected to represent them, town meeting members were elected to represent them, and certainly, as we did with the dog park, which we didn't put that up to a vote. We had hearings like this, people came in, said what was on their mind. We got emails from those who didn't want to come in, and people came to town meeting one way and talked one way and the other. So, I think that they've had their opportunity to come in, and they will still further have their opportunity. It's not like we're going to decide this and decide for everyone, as Mr. Carpenter said. It still has to go before another elected body, and they still have their opportunity for or against to be heard. So, that's the route that I would go, but I'm not opposed to sending it to the ballot in May.
Mr. Holstrom, then, Mr. Carpenter.
Point of order here. I know we're talking about sending it to the ballot box and to the voters and what have you. I believe that we've kind of steered off of the hearing issue, and I think what we should be gathering is information for the hearing, and then this discussion should probably be held after the hearing is completed, and that's my thought on that.
Okay, you are correct. So, is there anything else? Any, Mr. Carpenter?
Just a question through the chair to Mr. Liberty. Do you have a number of how many of the 81 communities the bans were done by citizen petition?
Through the chair, I don't have the number off the top of my head, but I do know that some of them were done, including Shrewsbury, which ours is probably closest to in terms of how it's written, was done by citizen petition. I believe Amherst was also done by citizen petition. So, it's not unheard of, it's fairly common.
I believe the town of Grafton was his petition, wasn't it?
So, maybe everyone in the county. Westboro was Board of Selectmen. Some of them have been Board of Health as well. They're not all Boards of Selectmen or Citizen Petition. I'm not aware of any that have been done at the ballot, though. As far as I know, we might be the first of that, as we said ago. I'm sorry, that's for later conversation.
So, if there's no additional discussion on the proposed bylaw, we can close the hearing and then discuss what action we want to take.
Motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Any discussion on closing it? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. So, thank you, everyone, for your input on this. So...
I will make the motion to propose this bylaw to the voters in the May town election.
Is there a second for discussion?
Second.
Okay, there's a second for discussion? Is there a discussion on this?
Yes, I guess I'll have some questions on the verbiage and the layout of this and legal legality of how it's worded and what have you. Should we discuss that after we take this?
Through the chair, yeah. I think at this point, my recommendation would be to take a vote on what action you want to take, and then based on that action, we have plenty of time to work with town council to develop the appropriate language for the ballot question. I believe it may also have to be approved, if not reviewed, by the Attorney General's office before it goes on the question.
Great.
Is there further discussion? Mr.?
Through the chair, point of clarification. So, we are gonna take a vote to send a bag ban bylaw to the voters next May. We are not going to town meeting members, we're going to the vote, all the voters.
So...
Is that correct?
Correct me if I misspeak, Mr. Holstrom. The proposal is to send a question to the voters at the May town meeting for their preference, yes or no, on a plastic bag, a single-use plastic bag ban?
Yes.
Ms. Lil Liberty?
Through the chair, I would just say that, again, my preferred method would be to go through, have us vote, send it to town meeting. I think that's fair, but if the rest of this board feels that they'd rather send it to the residents, then I'll support that.
So, Mr. Jacobson just pointed out, I did just misspeak. I said town meeting, I meant to say town election, the May town election. So, again, I, you know, I appreciate the work you've done on this and all the input we've had, but like we've had recently with the marijuana regulations, we heard from a lot of people who wished that they had a, had their voice heard at the ballot box. So, I would prefer that it go to May. Okay, so the motion is to, for the Board of Selectmen to pursue a ballot question on the May town meeting, I mean, May election, for residents' preference for a single-use plastic bag ban. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you, Ms. Lil Liberty, for your work on that. Mr. Holstrom?
Madam Chair, I guess instead of kind of looking at this and deciding on how it should be worded or what have you, I think probably to send it along and let maybe the Bylaw Committee or somebody decide on how it's supposed to be worded, legal verbiage, I don't know how the, the best way is to handle this.
Well, the question is just to get input from the residents to see if they support a bylaw that would exclude single-use plastic bag bans. And then the next step would be to develop the bylaw, which, you know, we have a proposal here, and that is what would go to town meeting. Am I correct on that? Yes.
Great. Fine, then I've got no other comments on the bylaw tonight.
So, you're all welcome to stay, but the hearing is over, and we have, we're gonna move on to the rest of the items.
And thank you all for coming.
Yes.
We leaned quite a bit.
Just make sure we do this one.
Yes, yes. Okay. Mr. Menard, thank you for waiting. The next item we have is the Auburn Hazard Mitigation Plan, and it's a presentation and a proposed vote to approve the Auburn Hazard Mitigation Plan. Mr. Menard, thank you again for your patience. Please go ahead.
My pleasure. I'll try to be brief. I'm Adam Menard, associate plan with the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission. You may remember, several months ago, I came before you to present a draft of your hazard mitigation plan. Since that time, the draft has gone off to MEMA, and MEMA has approved it, went off to FEMA. FEMA has tentatively approved the plan pending your adoption. That's why I'm here today, is to ask you a formal vote to adopt the draft plan. I'll just go through a couple of brief highlights of the plan to refresh your memory. A mitigation plan identifies natural hazards and the risks they pose to residents, infrastructure, property, and natural resources, and prioritizes projects, policies, education, procedures for reducing these risks now and in the future. An adoption of this plan approved by FEMA will allow the town to receive non-emergency federal disaster assistance and mitigation funding as mandated under the Disaster Act of 2000. Some of the hazards that were identified in the plan included winter storms, we're all very familiar with, severe thunderstorms, wind, flooding. Let's see. There were several strategies developed by the mitigation team. There's a list of those that I met at several meetings, I think you have a handout. Thank you, all those who are participating. One of the strategies, maintain aquatic weeds program, notably monitor the situation at Leesville and Pondville Pond, has a big weed problem with those ponds impacting wildlife, and stormwater drainage. Another strategy, develop communication link with the city of Worcester regarding the Worcester diversion tunnel. Another strategy, continue partnership with the Auburn Cable Access Station by running public service announcements on the station's page, and become a municipal vulnerability preparedness community. In that particular strategy, you actually received a grant for recently, you're gonna become an MVP town over the course of the next year. So, the plan is about 100 pages. I've hoped you all had a chance to review it at one point. It's quite, quite the appendix also, so it's a fairly substantive plan. It'll keep you covered for the next five years, and like I said, I'm here to ask you for your vote to approve this plan, and if you do vote to approve this plan, I will send it off to FEMA for their formal adoption tomorrow morning.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Menard? Mr. Holstrom?
Through the chair. Mr. Menard, thank you so much for bringing this forward. Being the past Emergency Management Director, we understood...
Being the past Emergency Management Director, we understood a lot of the problems that could have happened over the course of the years, but right now, seeing across country how the weather has changed so much, people are involved with water problems that they've never had before, with wind problems, there's the tornadoes, the hurricanes, we don't know where they're gonna come or how they're gonna come, and we've been quiet this year to a point, but just to say thank you for bringing this forward and being sure that Auburn has got a plan in place, and I thank the administration for being proactive and following along with this, because it's very, very important that, as you think the town is safe, it's in good shape, you can expect almost anything from anything, and this mitigation plan will definitely help us along in the future, and I want to say thank you to you, and thank you also to the administration for being proactive in this.
It's my pleasure, it's great group to work with.
Mr. Carpenter?
I just have a quick question, because normally we just vote, but I found in my packet a rather elaborate resolution that we're doing. So I just was hoping for some sort of explanation why we're changing our mode, or if there's a requirement for...
It is a requirement. Ms. Jacobson?
Through the chair, and I will turn to Adam as well, but I believe this was a boilerplate resolution that's provided by FEMA, and this has to accompany the plan when it's submitted to FEMA.
Okay.
Correct, has to be formally voted on and has to have that adoption to be fully approved by FEMA.
Are there any additional questions? Ms. Jacobson, do you have anything else?
Through the chair, I just want to thank everyone who was involved, and thank Adam for all his work on this. It's taken several months, as Mr. Holstrom knows, it takes a long time to do this type of thing, and it was literally hours and hours of sitting around a table and working with the school department, so Joe Fahey was here, and Ken Smith from the water department, and of course, our own internal staff, our fire chief in the police department, and EMD, and just so many different people, just looking at it from all different aspects to make sure, we tried to cover every single piece of it. I believe, Adam, this is a five-year plan?
Correct.
So this is something that will be in place for five years, and we'll be updating it again in the future. It's something that has to be updated on a regular basis, because as you said, things change. If there are developments taking place in some of these areas, that could change some of the layout of the land, so we'll make sure that we stay on top of it, but I did want to thank everyone for all their efforts in it. It took a lot of work, Adam kept everybody on track, so I think at the end, it's a great document. A little light reading at 100 pages.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the certificate of adoption for a resolution adopting the Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan for the town of Auburn.
Is there a second? I believe that was Mr. Carpenter's second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous, Sharon. And we do have the original document here to be signed tonight, and Mr. Menard will, as he stated, file it in the morning.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So are you here for Century Sportsman's Club? Okay, I'll move that up, just, no, hold on a minute, but it will ask the board to move that up.
Okay, I'll make the motion to move up item 5A of the Board of Selectmen general items for the Century Sportsman's Club outdoor entertainment license.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. You're welcome to come up right up to the table and join us, so we can hear you a little better. Good evening.
Good evening, Frank Pike, Treasurer, Century Sportsman's Club.
So, we have in your packet an application for an outdoor entertainment license, they have been before DCG. Can you tell us a little bit, first, you just gave me your name, tell us a little bit about what your plans are?
So Century Sportsman's Club has been holding every October a haunted hayride and spooky walk, this will be our 19th year, and that requires an outdoor entertainment license, so we've submitted the dates for the event, the hours for the event, a map of what's gonna be going on, and so we're hopeful that you'll approve it.
Do members have any questions?
No, I think it's a great thing that we see the trailer along the turnpike with the spigot sign on it every year, and it's been a very, very successful program, and I think that, yeah, it's definitely something we want to continue, the kids, I was gonna say, but adults are kids sometimes too at Halloween, so, yeah, I would very much be in support of this.
And you have met with DCG, you're familiar with the recommendations? I just, I do have one question. I was just impressed to see the numbers that you have, 500, I assume that's spread over that five-hour period?
Yes.
So you must get a little rushed early, but otherwise, the 500 is spread over those five hours?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Bertheum?
I'll make a motion to approve the license provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and all of its boards, commissions, and committees have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply in any and all the conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void, and with the conditions of the DCG to be placed on the license.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. Good luck with your event.
Thank you.
Thanks for waiting. Going back to public hearings and presentations, we have a presentation from the town manager on the ClearGov Transparency Center. Ms. Jacobson?
Through the chair, thank you to the board. I'm gonna take a few minutes and just try to show you some of the highlights of our new system, but I did send out a notice to all of you, and we did send out a media release, and we've posted this on Auburn Cable Television, our social media, our websites, and we've just wanted everyone to understand that we now have this new system. Want to thank the board, this was a warrant article that we had put in on the May town meeting, want to thank town meeting for supporting this, and Ed Kozinovich and I have been working on this for a couple of months now, ever since the town meeting vote, to get everything in place to get it to ClearGov. They basically, to not say glamorous, where it's a data dump of all the information that we have that goes to ClearGov, they take it and put it into the system that I'm gonna show you, and then the public is able to get in and look at everything, it's, you can see everything that we do, everything we've budgeted. What will be added in the next few days will be the FY18 actuals, right now you see budgeted, because we just closed out the books last week, so now we're ready to go ahead and give them what the actuals are, and you can actually, I'll show you, there are some charts in there where you can compare actuals to budgets, so you can see how the town's doing on these things. And the FY19 budgeted also will be up shortly. So I'm gonna show you the FY18 budgeted, and how you can access it, and of course, if you have any questions, always happy to answer it. So we've, we worked to put a new, as you can see on the bottom right of our website, a new logo here, Financial Transparency Center, and when you click on that, you'll get to Auburn's site on ClearGov. You can also just go right into ClearGov and type in Auburn and get there as well, but we wanted it to be easy for our residents to find this. So as you can see, and I know it's hard, this is, there's a lot of information on here, the first section that you see, first of all, we put our banner on the top, it's called the Auburn, Town of Auburn Transparency Center, and across the top here, you can see the years, 18, 17, 16, 15, and 14, so we were able to provide data for all of those years to ClearGov, so everything is on here. ClearGov actually takes care of putting in the data on the demographics, so I won't go into that, but as you can see, the demographics come from the census and the American Community Survey, which is a function of the census. So the most recent data available for any community on that is 2016, so the figures that you see here for demographics are 2016, so that's an interesting section. But I want to bring you to the financial section, and again, this goes to the transparency, we're hoping that this tool helps our residents, our taxpayers, to be able to understand where their taxpayer dollars are going, where our expenditures are, and how we budget. It's also a great tool internally for us to be using, there are some additional tools that you can use in the budgeting process that are available internally that we can use to really do some comparisons and moving things around, and it will really be a great asset to us when we prepare the budget. So I'm just gonna show you, for instance, so this is all based on the general fund, so if you click on the revenues, you will, and again, this is FY18, so you'll see the total amount budgeted, 62.691, and right below that, you'll see a pie chart, and the pie chart shows you the different revenue sources, and you can click on any one of them, you can click on state aid, for instance, and it will bring you to the state aid, what, again, this was a budgeted amount, what was budgeted for state aid, and you can click on the tax revenues, so you can actually see under, you can go under other financing sources and see what that consists of, you can see the taxes, and then another tool I just want to show you on here, each of those categories, what make up that pie, are listed below, and they do show as a standard practice on this site, the per capita per year, so understand that that's based on our population, so they're saying per person in the town, so per 16,133 people, that's how much was spent per person. I think the more relevant pieces are exactly what was spent, and you can see here this graph, this shows you actual versus budgeted, and I know it's hard to see it on this, but the actual is in dark and the budgeted is in light, so you can see where we're right on target, and you can see if there were overages, there weren't, there were not any, we were not over budget, we were actually under budget on the actuals. If you want to view the breakdown, for instance, of the taxes, and you want to see what tax revenues came into the town, you can click on this, and it shows it to you, again, with the taxes, room and meals taxes, penalties and interest, different kinds of tools you can use, you can click on bar chart, and you can see that real property taxes, that makes it very clear, that's one of the highest ones. Some people prefer what they call a mountain chart, which doesn't work so great on this one, because it's heavily in one area, and a box chart. So I'm gonna go back and just quickly show you the expenditures, so you can go back to Auburn, and again, you look down, the revenues are always gonna be on your left side, and the expenditures are, here we go, are down here on the right side, and when you click on view breakdown, you will have an option, as you can see, of personalizing your experience, so you can put your tax bill in there, and then you can see the breakdown of your tax bill. So just for purposes of this, I'm gonna say, if you had a tax bill of $4,500, you would put that in and click view figures, and what you'll see is, first of all, you'll see the breakdown of our budget, which you can see here in the pie chart form, and it shows you, based on town departments, board and elected officials, general services, education, youth services, then it breaks down debt, intergovernmental employee benefits, reserve fund, and capital outlays. You can also, again, just like under the revenues, you can look at it as a bar chart, so that makes it stand out, you can see where your taxpayer dollars are going, you can do it as the, again, the mountain chart, and lastly, you can do the box chart, so different ways to look at the data. And if you scroll down, under education, for instance, so we put in $4,500, if you remember, as a tax bill, so that was your tax bill, right here, it shows that education, $1,904 of your $4,500 tax bill goes to education, and if you keep looking down, $1,052 goes towards town departments. If you want to learn more about that, you click on view breakdown, and again, this will break it down by town departments, and you'll see all your different town departments, and you can click on a town department, or just go down below, whatever's easier, you can click on, say, fire, and it will show you administration versus prevention, EMS and suppression. If you wanted to click on DPW, which has different types of categories, if you click on that, you will be brought to the DPW breakdown, show you how much is budgeted for DPW for FY18. Here are the different divisions and focus areas in DPW, that's broken down in the budget. This is showing you, again, this dollar amount now in this breakdown is back to how much you're spending per capita per year, not on your tax bill, that's on the first couple of pages. But you can actually go into highway and take a look at it, and it will break it down, again, with your pie chart, but it will also show you, if you want to go into snow and ice, you can click on more detail, and as you can see here, it will show you the wages that are paid, the tree removal, equipment removal, store meals, every line item is in there, and this is for every single department across the board. So that's basically, and again, here are your bar charts again, and if you hover over the bar chart, it will show you the actual versus the budgeted and dollar amount by year, and you can go back and get that data now, all the way to 2014. So I think I hit the highlights of it, I just want to make sure you're comfortable with what the system is, we're excited about it, we're still learning, still learning all the tools, you know, we've been working on it and seeing what we can do with it, and I think it's unlimited, the possibilities that we can use it for, we'll keep populating with data. It did take a while to set it up, but I think it's so worth it. It's nice to have a tool that we can provide to the public and just be much more transparent, say, here's everything, there's nothing, there's nothing that we haven't put out there that the public can't find. It may not always be as easy for them to find, but I think this system makes it very, very simple to find something, and if there are ever any questions, they can contact me or the Assistant Town Manager, CFO, Ed, and we're happy to walk people through this. So I think, I think I hit pretty much the highlights on it. Again, it's one of those tools that if you really need to sit down and just start hitting things, and seeing what you can do with the data that's there, but it's been an excellent tool for us, and we will be using it internally, starting this year, again, when we start to put our budget together. So, thank you, and if you have any questions, you can let me know.
Did you have a question on the transparency?
Yes, I did.
Go ahead.
Madam Chair, thank you. I think this is awesome. We had been talking, you had been talking about this for some time now, and it's finally come through, and the transparency has increased tenfold with your administration, your team putting this all together, I think this is gonna be just a great thing, but a point you made was it would be a good budget tool, budgeting tool, and I guess my question would be, when that, the, when the budget process begins, your numbers are gonna change until the finance committee votes on it and goes through it. When will the residents be able to get to this site and see exactly what previous proposed for fiscal year 20? Can that happen beforehand, in process? How will that work? Because I think what will happen there is town meeting members make a question and say, what's this for? How come, can you ask this question? Or somebody from the outside can call and say, what about this? Can you look at it this way? You know, maybe something that, you know, would respond some questions.
Through the chair, this particular tool, and all the other ones we looked at, don't have the ability to put in your projected budget, that we do put our whole projected budget online, it is available online, but as far as populating in here, it's probably because it's too time-consuming to do that. This only has what your budgeted is, so what your approved budgeted goes in, as well as what your actual expenditures are, and it goes back to what's put on file with the department or revenue. So it cross-references to all of our DOR sheets, so everything you see here is actual and actual budgeted, versus a proposed budget that has yet to be approved wouldn't be on this. So anyone can go in and look at prior year's budgeted versus actual, and then on another part of our website, we always put the proposed budget.
So that can go up after the annual meeting, and it's been voted on?
Correct.
Not be beforehand, it'll have to be paper and budget finance committee?
Correct. Once it's approved and it's budgeted, then we will do the data dump and have all the information sent over to them. Basically, what we've done is we've linked our system, which is Munis, to ClearGov's system, so everything that goes into Munis is actually what's budgeted, not proposed. If it's proposed, it's not in Munis yet, it can only be budgeted. So that's the municipal software, there's a direct link to it, and then Ed works to get from the Munis over to them in a readable format. When we first put it out there, some of it didn't make sense, because they weren't sure where to put some of the accounts, so for instance, youth services showed up under another department, but it's really not, it's what we pay out to AYFS, so it's not a town department. So we worked really hard to make sure that we got the system in place, so it's a little bit more specialized to our budget, so people can understand it better, but it's not, it does not go on here until it's been approved and budgeted. But it's not, it does not go on here until it's been approved and budgeted.
Thank you very much.
Anything else on this?
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
If you can just hit the lights. Oh, Sharon's going to get them. Thank you. Moving on with the agenda, we have no communications. We've handled Century Sportsman's Club. At our last meeting, we had interviews for the appointment of the Zoning Board of Appeals' Associate Member. We have the applicant's, applications in our packet. We spoke with Ms. Reedy and Mr. Jones. Do board members want to take action on this tonight?
I would make a motion that we appoint Peter Jones as the alternate for the Zoning Board of Appeals.
I'll second.
Is that to expire June 30th, 2021?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Thank you. Next, we have the, excuse me, the draft zoning bylaw proposed amendments for the October 23rd, 2018 special town meeting. The vote would be to transmit the draft proposed amendments for ground-mounted solar energy systems to the Planning Board for the required hearing in accordance with Mass. General Law Chapter 40A.
I'll make a motion that we transmit the proposal for ground-mounted solar energy systems to the Planning Board.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Next, we have gift acceptance in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, to the Fire Rescue Department gift account. We have Lorraine Johnson in memory of Donald Ganache and the amount of $50. Is there a motion?
Accept with gratitude. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. We have no proclamations or recognitions. We have a vote on the Board of Selectmen goals for the fiscal year 2019. We discussed four goals at our last meeting. Is there any discussion on this?
I'd make a motion, Madam Chair, that we adopt item number one and allow the, I don't know if you're an official subcommittee or what, but to continue exploring live streaming of the meetings.
Second.
So we have a motion for one goal so far. Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion on that?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I guess, is it a goal for this board to do that? I guess, I don't know if we've ever actually taken a vote on this to say, we did, we took a vote on this for live streaming?
Yes.
Okay. I want to just be sure that we had done that. I didn't recall what it was just right now, but I wanted to be sure that we had. But I'm in support of that.
Okay. At the time, I don't believe it was a goal, but we did authorize the, the lives, the purpose. So, so the goal would be to continue looking into live streaming. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Any additional motions?
I believe that the Entertainment License Policies, number two, is very important. I think that we should look at those and bring those back so that we can, if there's any revisions, to take care of them. So I will make a motion to, for a proposed goal for next year for item two, we do the Entertainment License Policies.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Mr. Carpenter?
Just, just a general inquiry, and forgive me for this one. Are we assigning this to particular selectmen to accomplish? What is, what is the procedure we're going to follow for this? Is it going to the subcommittee, or is it something that we're all expected to look at other communities' regulations and bring them back? Or is someone going to captain the team, I guess, is my point.
So a couple things. I think what we need to do is, at some point, because we've reorganized, look at the subcommittees, see if we want to maintain the same subcommittees. But this is a policy, so I would believe that this would go to the Subcommittee Policy Review Board. And it would be reviewing the current entertainment license that we did adopt, but since adopting that policy, there's been some issues that have been brought to our attention. So maybe get some feedback and bring back and address those issues that were brought to our attention. But it is, these, you know, these are important, and we have to be sure that these are being worked on. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Is there any additional motion? Mr. Holstrom?
I was looking at number three and checked the status of outstanding board and commission issues that need to be resolved. And I did propose that. I don't know if it would be a goal of this board to have to do that. I think if we get some report from administration on, you know, what they're looking at and if there's anything coming towards us that we should may be made aware of. I don't know if we want to do this as a board, or should we ask, you know, the town manager to have the boards and commissions approach her with what they have going on that would be submitted to us for any action? I'm just, just a thought.
I mean, for me, if I may, Madam Chair, most of the boards and commissions are appointees of the manager. So I don't know what role we would have in resolving those. I, I'm certainly not averse to if they have an issue. But really, we have Finance, and we have ZVA, and I think we have Industrial Something Board, which I don't think we've appointed anybody to. But, you know, so to me, I don't see us, they're working through, like ZVA is working and represented on the zoning bylaw committee. Finance has never brought anything to us. They've responded to something we've sent, or the administration has sent, and we've So, I mean, for me, we, we have very little responsibility in the area now of boards and commissions, so I don't see how we would help.
Mr. Holstrom?
Yeah, I guess this was more of a, kind of a stopgap, you know, so nothing fell through the cracks. If there was something on a, depending on a board's, you know, record that, oh geez, you know, we, we got off onto some other track because something else came that was, took a more priority. The other cases, things like the dog park, where do we stand with that? It's going to come back to us, and, you know, maybe if we get some input as to what the status is, where are they with collection, where are they with design, where are they with, you know, whatever the process is with that, that, you know, we'd be made aware of it. And I think that's my reasoning for that. There were, you know, so that nothing falls through the cracks. We have things that, you know, if we have to address them, let's get going on it. And the other cases, you know, things like that outstanding dog park. I mean, we talked about that for a good long time, and then all of a sudden, it felt quiet. I know that, talking to a couple of the different members of the board, that they are working on it, but it's been a while since I've talked to them, so where are we now? And I think the public would be very interested in hearing things like that. So that was my question, but that's it. I just wanted to make that comment.
I appreciate the goal. I guess I just, I don't see that as our role anymore. The Dog Park Committee reports to the board, to the town manager. So it's not for us. Certainly, they are always welcome. I'm sure the chair would always put anybody on the agenda who asked to update us. I know they were just in, well, not the, not the committee, because I think the committee is disbanded, but members of the fur friends were here, and they let us know what their expectation was. But I guess my reservation on that is, these other boards and commissions don't, I don't feel any board reports to the Board of Selectmen. We appoint them, and as long as they're doing their work, it's, it's not for us to get involved in their processes, per se. But I think 99.9% go to the manager. So I would think that would be the appropriate stop if they have concerns, and if they want us to get involved, maybe they would do that through the manager and get what they need that way.
Okay.
If there's no motion on that, moving on to the fourth one, a comprehensive review of all the Board of Selectmen policies. For any policies that go before the DCG, to ask the DCG for their feedback on those specific policies. And I think this was submitted by me. I think that we have had some feedback on some of the policies we've, we've adopted that have raised some concerns with DCG, so I would appreciate support on this.
Well, it says a comprehensive, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, the, it says a comprehensive review of all policies, for any policies that go before the DCG. Have you got any specific policies in mind that we should begin with, or is it just a general overall?
So this is how, so how it should read. Perform a comprehensive review of all policies of the Board of Selectmen. And for any policies that go before the DCG, ask the DCG for their specific comments. So it's a comprehensive review of all. And then any that, any of the policies that go before the DCG, then we would ask for feedback. It's not two separate things.
Okay. I would support that, and I would make a motion to accept the proposed board goal number four.
I'll second if a discussion. So again, that would fall on the policy subcommittee first?
Yeah, and I, and I think at our next meeting, we could have a discussion on, on the policy subcommittee and maybe have two separate subcommittees. We can certainly have a discussion on that at our next meeting. Because it's, it's, it's board goals, and to just adopt these policies that just go before the subcommittee isn't necessarily fair. Did you have something, Scott?
I guess, I'm concerned that there's been feedback from DCG, and I, as a member, haven't heard anything from DCG. I just get what they send us. So is there something that I'm missing? And I am concerned about the policy subcommittee not having sufficient time to work on the projects. I mean, the indoor/outdoor license could conceivably take them for a while. And I'd rather do a few things well, or at least ask them to do one thing well, rather than load them up and say, you know, let's look at all of our policies.
And, and I would be happy to look at possibly two subcommittees that, you know, maybe one subcommittee to just evaluate all of the policies and address any issues, and then have a second subcommittee that addresses policies that were sent to the subcommittee by this board.
I guess then I would ask that we hold that until we have a vote on this, until we have a discussion as to how the board wants to move forward with, with that.
So, so we, we have a motion and a second, and Mr. Holstrom made the motion, Mr.?
Through the chair, so would that become a agenda item for our next meeting? Or how, how, how do we have that discussion if we're not having that discussion now?
I will rescind my motion and make a motion that we hold this till our next meeting for discussion.
And we'll include additional information on the, on the agenda, the formation of subcommittees.
Right.
So Mr., go through, me, withdraw your second as well.
I will rescind the second.
You all set on that, Sharon? Thank you. The next is a...
So if I made the motion, do we have to vote on that? That we're going to put it on our next?
I'll second.
We're just, we're just going to hold it till, okay, so we don't have to vote on that then? So, okay, no motion made then.
Next would be a vote on, to set the town manager's goals in early January to run parallel to the town manager's contract. We had discussion at that, at our last meeting, and this would just be to formally set her goals for, to run parallel with her contract, and they would be set in January.
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion to do just that.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Ms. Jacobson, your two items we took care of under presentations. Do you have anything else?
I actually do. It's not on here because we just settled on the date today, because we just got confirmation, and I'll get something in, in email to you. But we do have an upcoming public meeting workshop that's going to be on September 26th. So I don't want to wait and mention it for the first time at your board meeting on the 24th. So just to let people know, we're going to put it out there. It will be publicized. We've started to notify business people. But there is a proposed bylaw for Jewelry Square to help enhance it as a village district. It's been something we've been working on for a while. And we met with CMRPC on Thursday to go over it, and it's ready to bring it to a public workshop for discussion. So we got confirmation today that the presentation room at the high school is available. So it will be on September 26th in the high school, and I believe it's either at 6:00 or 6:30. But we will post it, so I just wanted to kind of get that information out there today. And we'll make sure that everyone has plenty of opportunity. What's really important, I believe, is for the property owners in that area to come, because it'll have the most impact on them. So we're hoping to get the business community to participate. Thank you.
Thank you. Under tabled items, we have the recognition policy and the proclamation policy for the subcommittees, so I'm...
We will be working on that in very near future, probably within next week, and we should have something soon.
And as just discussed, we'll have something on the next agenda for the subcommittees. There are no Board of Selectmen member items. Is there any public comment? Okay. Did anyone have anything else? No? I just want to mention that I did see on Facebook, on the Auburn Mass. Police Department's Facebook page, that we want to welcome back Officer Louis Santos after an extended period away. So welcome back, Officer Santos.
I'll comment on that, that I'm thrilled to see that he's back. We, you know, I think that there was some time that we weren't even sure that he would be back. So we are thrilled and very lucky to have him back. Thank you.
We have no minutes. Is there any other business before the board?
Motion adjourned.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Have a good night.